To order, this is just a recap. As noted, we'll discuss the medical examiner's budget hopefully next week when we've had time to digest some numbers from the state and come up with a plan. So Dennis, you want to give us a recap of what's on our agenda here?
Sure.
And let us know if there's any other actions you'd like us to take today.
Sure. Last week I did give you the general basic or general, all of our tax funds, the tax asking and tax rates. What I want to do today is break them down, it's in your packet there, to break it down to cities and townships, and then break it down further to residential class and commercial industrial. Those are your major classes in the cities. So in residential, you see, if you have the same $100,000 assessed value, you roll it back. Now, I showed the rollback differences from 24 to 25. Property at the $100,000 assessed, roll it back, you're $60.36 decrease in your tax. Now, to preface all this, this does not account for any increase because of rollbacks, doesn't count for any increase because of a new addition to your house or new valuations. So on an average, $100,000, I even took my own home, and it's about $69,000. My house went up about $15,000, $20,000. So it's hard to give a comparison. That's what the state uses, and this, these numbers here match exactly what's going to be on our estate for our maximum tax levy. The numbers jive, so I feel comfortable they're right. So we go to commercial industrial, they only get a 10% rollback. Their rollback did not change, so their rates, tax rate per thousand, or per $100,000 less the rollback, is $2.12 less taxes they'll pay. So now you go out to the townships, same variance there, and you'll notice the rates or the dollar increase is even greater because rural basic actually went down. So I say countywide, that does not include rural basic, because you're just talking to cities. When you go to the townships, you're talking to the total tax rate plus whatever the rural basic did. Well, out of counties, the rural basic went down, so on $100,000 assessed, rolled back to $46,034, they have a tax decrease of $83.04. Commercial industrial, it's a little better because the tax rate again went down there, that's $22, but your ag lands, that's the big difference there. The rollback went down from 91%, down to 71%, 20% dis-reduction. Their taxes for every $100,000 worth of land rolled back by the ag rate comes a $125 decrease. I want to preface this as this is a county taxes. That doesn't include the schools, the cities, the extension with state levy, cessors, but this shows that, yes, we did reduce that. We filed an intent of what House File 718, you know, wanted, whether you agree with it or not, it did lower the taxes, and we did survive this year coming up. I'm not going to talk about next year. But this year, it fell in place. And what I'm hearing from various other counties through Pat upstairs, that other counties are having a lot of troubles because some counties didn't reach the 350, but now they're trying to shove everything over to the general sup. Well, that'll be stopped by department managers because you have to reach the 350 first before you can levy the general sup. And then also, a lot of counties are running where they can't, they're reaching the cap at 350, so now they're moving uniform patrol deputies over to rural basic because they got levy, you know, levability there. So I can see down the road, the legislature's going to be looking at this, going to be looking to change it. So we prepared ourselves very well. I think we're in a good position, and even with 24, 25, I think we'll be all right, it just could be a lot tougher, because we don't have all these Band-Aids here. That's all I got.
Questions? Can you remind us on the different dates to be aware of coming up?
Yes. Next week, I believe it's the 6th of March, next Tuesday's the 6th or 5th?
Uh...
Always get confused around that.
The 5th.
The 5th. We do have public hearing on our additional, it's a pre-levy tax for our CIP projects. We have to do that every year. We did it last year, we're doing it this year. And that just gives authorization to put the money in our budget, which I already did, and now cover our CIPs for this year. The next date will be the 26th of March, that's when we have our maximum tax levy, and that actually has to be a separate from our regular meeting. Now, I got, I asked the state, do we have to have a meeting right before the Board of Supervisors meeting that date, do that hearing, then go into the regular board meeting? I got to find out, or can we have an agenda item within our regular budget, or our regular agenda? So I'll get that, but that's the 26th. After that, we don't have a, we don't serve our budget till April 26th. So we do have a gap here that, once we got our maximum levy, we can't exceed that, but we can always make changes from that March 20th hearing, or 26th hearing, to April 26th.
So, for example, the issue we're dealing with, with medical examiner, we can reflect that in the budget up to March 26th?
Yes.
And what is March 5th, again, for, you know, practical purposes? March 5th, can you expand upon what the pre-levy?
The pre-levy is to give us the levability to levy a tax that hasn't been, you know, certified yet. It's a pre-certification levy, which covers us because we don't know when we're getting the money or when, because there's interest involved where we pay on the first payment in fiscal year 24, 25. The interest will be a little higher than normal because we'll be paying either on June, adding that interest on our payments.
Okay.
But if, you know, say the medical examiner, for example, may cost us another $50,000, they'll have to come out of reserves because we're taking, we're just setting our maximum levy once we publish it. And I'll have to publish that probably by the 10th of March to get it in the right timeframe to meet the publication requirements.
Okay.
So Dennis, I wanted to ask you two questions, if I could.
Yep.
So first off, again, and I don't want to beat the set horse, but thank you for everything. I think we all rely on you, we all pull you in different directions probably, but I was concerned about the, I'm not sure if it's $210,000 in CIP that we approved in order for the sheriff's office to be able to have the Bearcat?
That'll be in next year's CIP.
Okay.
24, 25, because we won't be paying for that probably till August, September, even though it's already, we haven't received it, so it'll go against next year's budget.
Right, but that's what we approved in CIP for 25, FY25, which is this upcoming budget.
Yep, 210 there, 110 out of ARPA re-obligated, and the rest out of donations.
So I guess my concern, I had heard that that $210,000 may be spoken for, so to speak, with the 28th Street. Are you following this issue?
Okay, now I got to backtrack. The $210,000 money left over this current year, for the 28th Street, if it's more than $109,000, we're going to have to come up with money somewhere for that because we still don't have a final bill after it's been done for a year.
Okay, so I process very slowly, so you have to forgive me. So $210,000, you're saying is not for FY25, it's for FY24?
Yes, correct, I'm sorry. Yes, it is.
No, that's fine, that's fine. So the $210,000 is because we had unspoken for or CIP projects that weren't realized in this fiscal year?
Correct.
And those are going to the Bearcat?
Correct.
Okay. Now, for the $210,000 that we were talking about for potentially 28th Street?
Okay.
You're saying that if that exceeds $109,000, we're going to have to go to other sources of revenue?
Yes.
And my understanding is that's going to be about $210,000. You can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, because just trying to piece together a conversation with Kenny, and then, because there's so many moving parts with the authority, I want to make sure that we know what's up.
Yep.
So...
And there may be projects this year that we have, S may cause, may come in less.
Okay. So I just want to put out there that I think, a couple of things, not high levels of concern or any kind of panic thing, but it looks to me like there's a $100,000 gap, potentially?
Potentially.
With the 28th Street project that we're going to have to figure out. Is that a fair statement?
Correct.
Okay. So I just kind of want to flag that for, you know, us to track. And then the other concern that I have is, and this is a high-level aerial overview, this is kind of a Mark, Dennis, authority, somewhat question. It looked like there was $1.7 million on hand for the LEC authority to finish the project between all sources of revenue.
Yes, that's how much, how much money is on hand, that does not include the 470, but the information I've heard about or seen or talked about, that bill, when they get all done with all the add-ons, everything else could be 2.1 million.
So that's what I've heard as well, and that's a concern of mine, and I understand and appreciate that there's a lot of moving parts, and bills are coming in, and we're paying, but that's one of those, I get that we have the $470,000 in ARPA, but as the project progresses, I think as soon as we can know it would be helpful rather than kind of a day before, we need this without the, you know, ability to really dig into things a little bit, so.
And that's why I've always said, please do not dig in that $470,000, because I think it's going to be needed, but when they get to the end of the project, hopefully before July 1st, they'll have a greater idea how much money could we return to the county, if any.
Okay.
I'm not counting on it, so I think they'll spend every dime of it.
Yeah. So whenever we can know, as that information becomes clear, that's great, so, thank you.
And some of the things there, too, say we spend 2.1 million more, there's some costs that are going to be recouped, probably. We don't know the number, and we may not know the number for a long time, but when that does come back, it will come back, in my opinion, back to Woodbury County because we funded everything. That's my, that's my belief, and I think Mark would probably agree with me on that from the LEC. So there can be other changes to budgets, so we can make some changes as we go along here yet, just can't increase the tax askings. Okay? We can always decrease them, but I wouldn't do that. We're in a good position.
All right, we're up against our 430 unless anyone has any quick questions or need to come back to this. All right. Calls me into order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
......................................................................................................
The next item on the agenda is item three, approval of the agenda. Are there any corrections or changes? I'll second the motion by Radek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Items four through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four is approval of the minutes of the February 20th meeting. Item five is approval of the claims. Item six from Board Administration is approval of resolution for a tax suspension for initials E.W. Item seven from Human Resources includes A, approve the authorization of a Human Resources clerk two position, B, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions, C, authorization to initiate the hiring process, and D, approval of request to de-authorize county position. And eight from Secondary Roads is to approve the permit to work in the right-of-way for Charles Milligan and to direct the chair to sign the permit. And nine is to receive the resignation letter from Deputy Medical Examiner Dr. Bryce Knoll. This does, this is separate from the position of medical examiner that rescinded her resignation. One Deputy Medical Examiner, Dr. Knoll, as you can read in the letter included in the backup, is still resigning, and so if there's no further comment or questions, we have a copy of that in our backup. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second?
Second by Taylor. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0. Item 10, presented for information today and potentially action later. This is submitted by Supervisor Bittenger and Agape Community Services. This is opioid remediation settlement use funding request from Agape Community Services. So would you like to introduce it, Mr. Bittenger?
Yeah, go ahead and come forward. In my role as a pastor here in town, as lead pastor, I sit on the board, on the Board for Agape Community Services, and it was formed a couple of years ago with the civic task of addressing the drug addiction and just the destruction of the families, especially men in our community with drug addictions, alcohol addictions, and so I get the privilege to sit on the board of that. And so today I've asked our board chairman, our other board members to come and present, and we were looking at some of the opioid remediation settlement use funding, and so we are, have some backup materials. In the backup, you can see there's the outline of our program, who we are, proposed initial budget of operations, the layout and design, we're working with CNBA Architects, and we have a building design already going. We've been through, over at city planning and zoning before city council, and so they're going to explain some of that, but it's all in your backups. You can see the program overview and where we're at in the process, and so with that, I'll let, yeah.
You have approached City Council already, or you will?
We have.
You have?
We have, yep.
Okay.
We've been for that, and Jason, our board president, can kind of explain some of that and give kind of a quick overview on that, but go ahead, guys, why don't you introduce yourself and...
Yeah, I'm Jason Gary. I'm the current president of Board of Agape Community Services.
My name is Rochelle Rossin, co-founder and board member.
Terry Quintana, Vice President of the Board.
So I'll get started here just with a real quick introduction to Agape Community Services. I joined the board just a few years ago, and where we sit right now today is that we have identified a piece of property adjacent to the Woodbury County Jail that the City of Sioux City owns. We have made an offer, we have gone through rezoning, we're still waiting for the formal feedback from the city council on the offer we've put in front of them, that went before them, we believe, yesterday. And so we're waiting for their response to that, but we have the funds necessary to purchase that piece of property, and then we anticipate going into a capital campaign into the community overall to begin raising funds for building. We estimate that that building cost would be anywhere from $10 to $14 million for construction, and then in addition, it would be operations to begin, and then, of course, endowment, those sorts of things. Most of you are pretty familiar with capital campaigns on a nonprofit level, so there's lots of processes that'll go into that, but first step is we want to secure the property, and we hope that that's going to be, that we're going to have an accepted offer with the city here pretty soon, and then we'll move to the closing table. But beyond that, there, I'm going to leave it to, I'm going to leave it to Terry and Shelley to go ahead and kind of walk you through the vision of Agape, but essentially what it brings to the table is something that we don't have in this community presently, and frankly, that we don't really have much in the state, which is a long-term rehab facility that is for men only, that's focused on a nine-to-12-month recovery process where they would be living onsite, going through rehabilitation, but not just rehabilitation, but really going through the steps that, operationally, that Terry and Shelley can walk you through as to how to fully recover and not just come out just having been off of substance abuse for a couple of months, but rather coming off, they've gone through job training, skill development, emotional training, so that they can come back into the community as men who are ready to, you know, serve their family, serve the community, be tax-paying citizens, and individuals who contribute to our community overall. And so that is kind of the vision, and it's unique versus what we have in the community today, and that's why we're big proponents of it overall. So that's kind of where we're at operationally, as far as securing the property and the general vision, but Rochelle and Terry can talk much more about what it would look like on the day-to-day and kind of how it would be different from some of the rehab programs, because they have the detailed knowledge about that.
Hi, my name is Rochelle Rossin, and I'm a co-founder of Agape Community Services. Why we are different is we have several different factors. One of them is we're a therapeutic community. What is that, you might ask? Where peers hold each other accountable. You have different phases that you go through, and the last phase, the third phase, is like a mentor model where they, you know, help kind of coach the younger phases underneath them. We'll also have a 15-person detox unit. We, inside of our treatment, we will have cognitive behavioral therapy along with the faith component, with the therapeutic community, long-term, nine-to-12 months cognitive behavioral therapy and faith. The statistics for success rates for all of that are anywhere from 72 to 95%. We are starting with men, because there is a statistic that if the man is emotionally well and is the leader in the household and is a believer, that 85% of women and children follow. I work in the juvenile justice system, and I work with children. We do everything we can to get them holistically well, and then we send them back to the families, and, you know, thus it trickles down from there. So that's why we're starting with men. Eventually, we will have women's and teens on the same property but housed in separate units. The treatment that we're using is from the Change Company. It is evidence-based. There is a program inside of the federal prison system called ARDAP that is such a good program, it gives people a year and a half off of their prison sentence, and we're like, why do people have to go to federal prison to have this kind of treatment? And so we want to offer it to them in our community here. Addicts are considered antisocial, and so we want to help them to become pro-social, building deep roots in our community, having, you know, serving, being involved. The micro businesses that we'll have will not only help them to pay for their treatment, but help them to have money for when they leave and to have skills and to like really be the leaders in their households. We are partnering with 10 different churches, which will be doing service projects in the community all throughout their treatment. We are going to have a 15-person detox unit in there, and it's going to be really exciting. When it's open, we really hope that you all come and like take a look at it and even just witness the miracles that are happening.
Also, I think I would add that the curriculum, like she said, is evidence-based. It's been proven, it's got the statistics to back it up, and it's excellent compared to most treatment center statistics and most criminal background statistics. There will be 60 inpatient men, and we will also have the same thing on the outpatient side, so we'll have room for 60 outpatient men as well.
Each phase holds 15, and we're also going to have, I may have mentioned this, but 15-person detox units, and you don't have to, I mean, we're going to have people that will drop out. They will come to the detox unit, it's right next to the jail. Hopefully, that land comes through, which will be perfect. We've talked to some law enforcement, and, you know, they have, they can't take them to jail a lot of times when they're super intoxicated, but yet they may be liable, and so it would be perfect to have it right next to the jail where we can detox them, and then if they need to have charges after, they can go, or go from the jail and come right to our treatment facility, or be in our treatment facility and see where they don't want to go, which is the jail.
So the funding that we're asking for is going to help us first hire our executive directors so that they can get started as far as working in the community, networking, getting our licensing set up, getting our staff...
Doing our policies and procedures, you know, there's a lot of fundraising, there's a lot that happens. We went to talk to judges, and not even just in the Siouxland, but like all over Iowa and the tri-state area, and, you know, for like low-level offenders, you know, maybe instead of prison might not be the answer, or, you know, all the time people are getting kicked out of the RTF, and so that they have the opportunity to go through our treatment center instead of going back to prison, and actually getting tools instead of just like ripping the Band-Aid off, you know, like fixing the problem in the root issues. So, yeah, the, which I hired the executive director, which will be networking, which will be fund development, which will be talking to community members, teaching, just getting everything prepared that you can see what happened with the new nonprofit, and then also the remaining money that we're asking for would go to help pay for architect fees, which we have CNBA, as Dan Bittenger stated.
Which our architect fees are a lot more than what we're asking for, but we do have other funders that are participating in it to help with the remainder.
Well, I love that there's something like this in this community. I guess my question is, what are you looking, you know, to for guidance as far as like a, like a model, or does anyone with the project, have they done this before? You know, what really started this? I know the location is hopefully open to you. It makes sense, it's kind of out of the way, you know, that's obviously why we have the law enforcement center there, and I'm kind of, you know, frankly, you know, glad that, you know, there isn't that stigma that we heard exists for some other groups as far as where the location is, but, you know, again, to my question, what are you, you know, basing your, you know, your ideal on as far as another project, or?
Yep.
Or anything like that?
So it's coming from the Change Company, which we're using the model that they use in the federal prison system, only not with incarceration. The program that I talked about that gives people the year and a half off of their federal prison sentence, and it is not an easy program to complete. I've seen people choose to do their time, then go to Get Well and go through the program. I mean, there's definitely a lot of hoops that you have to jump through, and you can be held back. So each phase is three months, and, you know, it kind of comes with like, in the beginning, like your core beliefs, your, you know, the lies that you believe, the eight attitudes to success, and then you transition to the middle phase, which is rational thinking, and then at the end it's transition, like how to live with others, how to transition back into society, and how to like really challenge your thoughts and break down all of the criminal. And it's not just for addicts, it's also for like criminal thinking. Like I said, the word pro-social, it really helps people to be in the community and to be successful. And the success rate for, like I said, for, with the therapeutic community and ARDAP is anywhere from 75 to like 93 or 95%. We have the statistics, I think, in the, yeah, it's, I mean, I broke them all down, it depends on what study, but they're very high, more than the 30-day treatments. You know, it takes 62 days just to build a new neural pathway of practicing something 15 to 20 minutes a day. And our treatment in Sioux City, they are doing the best that they can, but 30 days is just not enough.
And to cheer my own dancers, to add on to that, we've been visiting different facilities around Iowa that have, they're either faith-based or non-faith-based, but just kind of different models set up, solidly, facilities set up, operational setups. Many of you might be familiar with Teen Challenge of America, that's part of, we've looked at some of their stuff, but this is uniquely, we're kind of taking all that, and Sioux City's going to own it. The churches of Sioux City will own it and be involved, they have skin in the game, and so we're kind of taking the best, kind of cherry picking all that and putting it together.
And putting it together. We visited a place in Davenport called 180, and that's where they like really have like the micro businesses and the skill building, and like we checked out like all of their model, too, and, I mean, they even gave us our budget, their budget, they've been amazing at like walking us through some of the stuff that, when they started up, that they maybe did wrong or mistakes they made and things that have helped to make them successful and community partners.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, even in Des Moines, we've visited, long-term rehab, longer-term rehab facility isn't a brand-new concept, but it's not around here, and it's definitely not geared towards men. Most facilities are women and children, and that, and so as, I know, the last tour I went through, people in Des Moines, like, we have nowhere to send men on a long-term other than just a 30-day rehab clinic, and so they, yeah, quite a bit of excitement. So we're not reinventing the wheel or coming up with something brand-new. ARDAP, though, is, is unique in that sense, we're going to bring that program to the equation, but it's, it's a, it's a, other models have proved it's doable, we just have to build it really, and then, and then get it started.
Another cool thing about the Change Company, the people that we're going through, they are just built, in the process of building their...
Digital platform?
Yep, their digital platform, and it's super cool because we can tailor, I mean, each, each thing. So Terry, she might struggle with anger, I mean, she has different trauma, different issues, so everybody will also have their own individual case plan. They'll do the, you know, the set thinking models, but, you know, maybe she needs to do an interactive journal on anger, and we want to work with men with abusive behavior and really get like to the root cause of all of the issues, and I'm telling you, if their trauma has trauma, we're going to get to it.
So it's a compelling case, I believe, you know, for donors and partners, but are you able to say, or can you say at this point where most of your money is coming from or you hope will come from?
Yes, we do, we do have a plan, and we have several different revenues of income that will be coming in. One will be having community partners, of course, private donors, private pay. We will be able to build insurance for the outpatient, some of the inpatient. Our micro businesses are going to be like a portion. We're hoping to maybe partner with housing and get some money through, through that, and there's an addiction recovery, too, there's some money in that. I think Owen Grants, I think I have like eight different...
Yeah, we have like eight different revenue streams.
Revenues, mhm.
To get it started, a lot of it is going to be private funding that we've already reached out to and talked to.
Quite a bit. Not all solidified, but I mean, we have...
One of the big components, what was it? One of the big components right now is people are wanting to see us once we can get the land signed and delivered. A lot of businesses and donors are waiting to see that kind of, that kind of, we've actually got that property. As you can see in the backup, we have a building design, and the board we're working with, CNBA, to now to detail plan that building design out, and so that's another portion of it, so, but we have, we have eight revenue source streams, but, and also, too, the churches, a lot of churches in the Siouxland area are just giving monthly to that, you know, bought in, once again, skin in the game, we need this, and so...
Everybody we've talked to, every private donor, they are like, we need this, this is so exciting, like when, you know, when is it going to be open? This is so exciting, like when, you know, when is it going to be open? We're already getting calls, or I'm getting like people messaging me in Facebook, like, hey, when is your treatment facility going to be open? I have somebody, I'm like, I'm so sorry, it's not yet.
So, to piggyback on his question on the finances, were you asking about the finances for building or the finances for operating? Because it's kind of like, I think, did you kind of answer both?
I was, mostly building.
Oh, well, I answered for operating.
Okay, because my curiosity was on the operating side.
Yeah, that was.
After it's built, how is it sustained?
That, my answer was for operating, the sustainability. Do you want me to repeat it?
No.
He's asking about building.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I said when, when we talk about the building of the startup, a lot of that is going to be from donors, and we've already secured some donors for that.
The capital campaign's all going to be primarily private donations, so whether it's through MURD or other private donors that step forth. The capital campaign has yet to be built because we wanted to secure the piece of land first. Then, from there, we have a building design, put together a packet, and then, and then hire, likely hire a fundraising consultant to begin the two-to-three-year campaign to go ahead and raise the funds and build the building. So, that time structure is built into the deal with the city of Sioux City, that we would have time for capital campaign and then also the time for construction post that. The operating is, yeah, it's a different piece of the puzzle. That's where more ongoing partnership, insurance, micro businesses come in to kind of feed that subsidy that, that most of these places don't. You know, they don't, on insurance alone, they won't cover it, but when we have partners, whether it's through churches, grants, those sorts of things, we come in to kind of fill, fill that gap and keep it operational over the long-term. Plus, the outpatient element is going to be, would be also be a strong resource.
So, is it fair to say, and I'm very appreciative of just echoing Chairman Ang as far as faith and family, the long-term nature, broad community support, I think it's great, and your enthusiasm's contagious, so that's great as well.
Have coffee, it'll get it more exciting.
Yeah, yeah. So, I guess my question is, is it fair to say that this is kind of a bridge for that executive director to come onboard? Obviously, it's one-time funding from the opioid settlement, but then, that executive director's also able to help with fundraising and, you know, until you're sustainable, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's exactly, exactly a fair statement. I think we want to be able to focus primarily in the first phase of the campaign on capital, being able to go ahead and, and focus on building fundraising and not have to focus so much on fundraising, executive, operational dollars during the first phase of this, and that's a key component where you can help us bridge the gap a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, is this duplicating any services? I mean, you, you've said it's the only long-term. Now, I'm trying to think, I know the Gospel Mission used to do something related to transitioning people back into, you know, real life, but I, I don't know if they still do. I haven't been involved with the Gospel Mission in the last probably five years as much, so I don't know if that's the duplication.
They're actually restructuring right now and looking at two-week stay periods.
Okay.
Vast majority of the stuff that's around here is all 30 days or less. And, and while, while there is benefit to having that detox period, it's, it's not a great long, it's just not, the statistics show it's not a great long-term solution. And so, this is, this is far more, far more in-depth and in doing so. It's not just, also, it doesn't have a dual component where we're trying to help homeless individuals and do that. This is really very focused on substance abuse. It's very, could be possible, people come in and they are struggling with homelessness issues, but our focus is substance abuse primarily first and foremost.
Criminal thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean, there is Hope Street too, which is doing a good job, but their waiting list, I think I heard is like, please don't quote me, but I was at a meeting, I thought I heard like 52 people or something was on their waiting list, plus they don't have the treatment piece of it.
They don't have the curriculum.
And that's, I mean, that is the.
They're like a hamlet.
Yeah, I mean, you need, you need tools. We believe you need both tools and the faith component. And in order to come to our treatment center, you don't have to be a Christian, you don't have to, you can reject it, you don't have to accept Christ in order to graduate even. It is, you know, available, but it's not love if it's forced. And so, I mean, like all are welcome.
Any other questions? All right, okay. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you for this opportunity to come.
Thank you.
Could I just ask a follow-up question of Supervisor Bittenger? So, and I may have asked, I apologize if I asked this the last time, but thank you for putting both of these on the agenda in terms of opioid settlement. I don't know that anybody's taking the bull by the horns, but given your background and your connections in the community, great work. So, are you thinking next week, next couple of weeks, will you have a personal recommendation on how we sort of divvy out the slice of the pie? Or what are your, what are your thoughts on the way forward? Kind of a pragmatic brass tacks question.
Right. I was going to probably bring it back in April. Let's get through the certification, a budget, make sure, and then after that, we'll decide. So, probably by mid-April to bring that back to us. But then, on the Agape, I would probably, of course, abstain because conflict of interest to vote on this, so. But, of course, my recommendation is I, for Sky Ranch, and in this, I believe it's their, they're reading through the settlement fund, you know, uses. I think it falls underneath, it's clearly can fall underneath some of the uses that Sky Ranch is proposing and Agape is proposing. So, ethically, I wouldn't have any problems with that. I do think it benefits its local, its local companies going back, you know, the money's helping us people here in Sioux City, so I would be, I would be approval of both, but I would, of course, abstain from Agape, voting on that, just because of conflict of interest.
No, very appreciated. And can somebody remind me with the, or remind the board what the total funds are kind of on hand for opioid settlement?
Five sixty.
Currently, we're at 535. We're going to receive 39,000 very shortly from a partial settlement.
Over and above, or over and above the 535?
Oh, yes. Over 18 years, and this is stress shock quite a bit because of bankrupts and everything, we should receive about 1.8 million.
Over five years, you said?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, yeah.
They are having something down ISAC on opioids, so that's one of the sessions going to for the supervisors at the spring school. Hopefully, learn a lot more there too.
Yeah. I guess one more follow-up to that too, is if we can catch them early, then it's less likely they'll end up homeless too, because a lot of people that are homeless in this community are homeless because of addiction-related issues, so it would be nice to have this as kind of preventative to keep them out of the building next door and some of the buildings downtown.
Well, everything that was mentioned as far as, you know, the men having an impact far beyond themselves, whether it's attending church or getting out of addiction or, or getting well, I mean, not being homeless is certainly another one, so. Very appreciative of this item and look forward to discussing it again after our budget is completed and after your land question is answered by the city. Please keep us informed as soon as you know. All right? Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Move on to item 11 from the board, from Mr. Taylor, two items for information. The first is a discussion to extend health insurance to employees and their families catastrophically injured in the line of duty if necessary and clarifying secondary roads workers inclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is informational only, and appreciated Chairman Ang reaching out and questioning rightly if there was any redundancy. I had had a conversation with our county engineer on whether or not the policy that we approved nearly two years ago, where this board worked to become a leader, at least at that time, something that the state wasn't doing, to extend health insurance to families of those who had fallen the line of duty, whether they would be deputies, jailers, somebody in juvenile detention or first responders, wanted to make sure that, you know, secondary roads after this last winter, when they were doing some things like clearing, so that emergency services or deputies could go out on our roads, in sometimes very hazardous conditions, that this would extend to them. And in doing so, may have jumped the gun a little bit, wanting to put this on the agenda. Mark had said that he thought it would be good if they were named in the resolution, but then, in seeking some guidance from Joshua, believes that as long as the person's catastrophically injured or meets the merits of the resolution, that any county employee, as long as it was in the line of duty and by way of putting his or her life on the line, would be able to have that family taken care of. So, with that, hopefully, that's a little bit of clarity, and if anybody needs to go back on the record, they can listen to this or look at the backup otherwise. So, that's informational if there's any comments or anything to add.
Sometimes we just like to make sure we did something good in the past, and we did, so. Item B is information on reconsideration of the present plan for roundabout enclosure of access to Old Lake Port at the junction of Elk Creek and Christie Road in Sioux City. Preface this, that in our backup is a note Mr. Taylor and I received from county engineer Mark Nara on the 23rd. He's currently traveling at a conference, I believe, and so, he'll be back next Tuesday to discuss this in more detail. And of note to the residents most affected, the county engineer's office is pursuing an easement, given some new information they received, which hopefully will result in a better outcome. And so, unfortunately, the county engineer is not here, but he has some representatives. Thank you for these documents. These, are these updated from before? Are these maps updated in any way from what we have considered before?
Kyle Gates with Secondary Roads. These maps were prepared to show the difference in amount of concrete that would be required versus the roundabout or just repaving what's currently out there.
I'm going to interrupt you just for a second. This is Mr. Taylor's item, so I'd like him to introduce the concern, and then we can look at these maps and ask you questions.
So, I'll probably call you up at that appropriate time. Is that fair, Mr. Chairman? So, thank you very much. So, of course, on February 22nd, the public information meeting held at Morningside Assembly of God Church, 30 residents attended, counterpart from the city, county engineer Mark Nara, city of Sioux City engineer, staff from DGR. And so, my hope is we can, it says, give direction to the county engineer to study all viable options for the 19 homes without vehicle access for the two to three months during construction. Thankfully, we don't have to give direction because they're already taking the initiative to address on Old Lake Port Road that stub that would essentially put those folks on an island with the plan that they would have to park at the Morningside Assembly of God Church and then use golf carts to go to their vehicles. I've heard, I've, I've gone to the neighborhood, I've talked to some people, I have Deputy Todd Peterson here, who I'd like to have come up and address the board, who's kind of been polling some of his neighbors. Yeah, if you would. I think that there's two concerns, and one is addressing, which I believe Mark and some others have as far as an access road that does not impact the leach field of one of the neighbor's properties that may provide access to those folks. And just so you understand what some of them are dealing with, we have some elderly and infirm people who get groceries delivered. We have folks that have children who are under the ages of six years old, in which the National Public Safety Administration says you ought not put children in golf carts. I imagine my own family, we come home with $300 or $400 worth of groceries, six kids. I don't know how many trips that would be back and forth. Would that be four? It's an unlit street.
Few.
Yeah, I mean, you just, this is not, to me, if we can't provide those folks with access, I don't support this project, and I hope you might not either. But I do believe, again, to our county engineer's credit and the city, I do believe that they're looking for a possible viable way. So, that's one issue, and then I'll address the second. But if I could call on Deputy Peterson just to give us a little bit, you happen to know somebody who lives on that road?
Yeah.
Yourself and your family?
I live on that, yeah, I live on the road.
And so, if you could just talk to it a little bit, and then what you, the information you've been able to garner from neighbors, that'd be appreciated.
Yes, sir. I ended up talking to 16 out of the 19 families that live on the cul-de-sac. 12 of those families are against the project if the road is blocked. 12 of those families are also in favor of the project if there is an access point to get to the, to their property. Three are against the project altogether, regardless of access or not. One family is for the construction, either way, doesn't, doesn't matter to them. There's also three families that have home businesses that they run out of their houses, which could affect them financially. And there's elderly folks on the street. One has to use a cane to walk, another lady has a walker, and a third one is in a wheelchair. So, that was basically about the information I got.
And as far as where you're at personally on that list, where would you be?
I'd be with the 12 in favor.
If there's an access, okay.
Yes, sir.
So, any questions for Deputy Peterson?
Was the, were the three against, simply against, or was there a breakdown? Did the residents there care as much if it's a roundabout or a traditional intersection?
They, they didn't just, they didn't want it at all.
They just care about their access?
Yep, they just, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I should note too.
I did get a call from, sorry, I did get a call from an elderly lady that was wondering if me or Mr. Taylor was knocking on their door.
Oh.
They just missed somebody, so that was probably you.
That was probably me.
Similar haircut.
I, I did a couple laps.
So, I said, you can probably answer the door. I've heard there's someone going around asking what people think.
That's one of my church members.
Public information meeting, I don't know if you heard the roundabouts cut down on accidents by 82%. I did a check at that intersection. In the last 10 years, there's been two accidents at that intersection. So, I don't know what 82% of two is, but I'm not really good at math, but it's just another fact. I do have the signatures, if you guys would like those.
I'd move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Rattig.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Bittenger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass is 5-0.
So, that's one of the two issues, and very appreciative of just kind of that aerial overview. I think it's fairly clear on that one that this would be, we're not talking two days, two weeks, we're talking two, two and a half months, and such an impact on people's lives. The second one, I wanted to just give a little bit of the highlight of, as we had the public information meeting and we were confronted by people who said, what are you doing constructing a $2 million roundabout? Just to highlight a couple of things that Mark sent to you, Chairman Ang and myself, it's not a $2 million roundabout project. Of the Elk Creek grading and paving that's next to the church, it's $787,323, and the intersection reconstruction is $930,763. It's Mark's opinion that that intersection needs reconstruction, utility movement, either way. So, whether or not it's the roundabout or the traditional, that that's something that just for the good of the public informationally is something of note. The other thing that I think that we need to at least just question informationally, and, and I'm not saying this is hard for or against, but as you saw on a public media website, you know, we had several hundred, nearly reaching 1,000 comments, the question becomes, does this merit the roundabout? And the information that's being provided is we could have an influx potentially from the Elk Creek side of 150 or 200 more vehicles. Treasurer Bertrand contacted me, and we talked about the Elk Creek development where you have, I think it's Bison, Whitetail, and that area, whether Singing Hills punches over to Old Lake Port. And so, I drove it, you know, I've run out that way, and it indeed does. And so, just looking back at that Elk Creek area, unless I'm missing something, which could genuinely be possible, seemed like there are room for 18, 20 homes along there. And so, I was just kind of questioning, how much more traffic are we actually going to have if you had five points of equal access? You know, of course, maybe a roundabout's merited, but when you have this one dead-end stub of Old Lake Port, those folks are going to have to stop to yield anyway. They're no longer going to be able to turn left. Is it really merited? And, and maybe it is, far be it from me to play engineer, but I just thought receiving some of the public input is at least worth asking the question. I know there'd be some saving on pavement, but it's something that, as I've been contacted by people who live on my street and in the area, otherwise, it's a question that people have had, and so, just wanted to, to raise that issue.
Quick clarification question on the image we received with the petition, petitions with this yellow, what is this?
Oh, I'm sorry about that. That's, that was from the neighbor Magnus. That was an idea that he had proposed. That was an idea that he had proposed.
So Todd, this is in order to be able to cut over in terms of an access road?
Yes, sir.
Instead of the opposite neighbor, you would have to cross over somebody's septic system? And I asked Mark, is that viable? And he said, not if the person wants to use the facilities for the next, you know, two or three months.
So is this, is this highlighted area just a person's idea or is it in the plan?
No, that's an, that's an idea.
Okay, as far as, okay, 'cause we're, 'cause we're currently looking at
That's what I
South of that.
Oh, I thought you were actually looking to the north of that, the black triangle. Because the, the black triangle
Black triangle was the original idea, but that's, has the septic system on it.
Yeah.
So the yellow was, as far as I know, they're working, asking that landowner if that's a possibility.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
I didn't know that was
I didn't know what that was from.
No, I, I can, I can take that back. I didn't know it was attached to the bottom.
Oh, let's, yeah, we didn't, we meant to receive the petitions then, so this is, this is someone's drawing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Get this to Michelle. So you're asking, Mr. Taylor, if anyone had any thoughts on the project as a whole? Is it at this point, or?
Yeah, so I think it's to just know the level of angst and anxiety and heartburn of those folks that we've, we've heard about first. And then it's just to question, and again, I'm not, you know, saying this is a foregone conclusion, but I do think it's merited because people are asking those questions. Are we indeed going to have this influx of 200 vehicles from that area? And I couldn't see where the development would be increasing to that degree. I know Mark's not here tonight, and completely appreciative, but even talking at a very high level of 10 vehicles per home, which I think you can imagine, five vehicles maybe, but just trying to imagine if, if it's merited or not, and I think it's worth the ask, so.
Question, well, first of all, to answer the access, again, County Engineer will be discussing this next week with us, and fully hope and support him finding a way for access. I don't think that's ever been in question from the beginning of the public meeting. And I was surprised to hear or read in Mark's write-up, Mark Nara's write-up, there's so many Marks, sorry, that the Sioux City's normal policy is to require residents to walk home during street construction. This is obviously a joint project, so any changes to the design, which was actually before both governing bodies in the end of 2022, from looking up the minutes, when the roundabout idea was also first disclosed in public meetings, you know, that would require some cooperation as well as any changes in the funding or project scope. But question for our former Sioux City Councilman on the left, Mr. Raddick, do you have recollection of how a project like this would typically work with the city? Are we, are we going above and beyond anything the city's ever done? Or is this a situation where they would probably be doing the same thing?
I would say on the Country Club project, there was a golf cart program that worked with that, but I would say also if accommodations were needed after it was let, then you had to work with the contractor to make those accommodations. So I do think it's better to work on this now as far as a plan rather than after it's let, because most of these issues occur after the contract's already been bid out. So I do think we're discussing this at an appropriate time.
Okay.
I could also speak on behalf of, while I go to Morningside Assembly, which is on the corner here. When it was discussed in church on a business meeting, there was a collective groan, you know, no excitement for roundabouts, but I think a lot of people do understand the engineering aspect of having five streets coming to one point, and how that is typically a better flow for traffic, especially if you are on Old Lakeport, you only have basically the, the one stop sign now as opposed to another stop sign right after you stop. There's also more to, you know, potential development, as the church owns 16 acres and has had multiple offers from developers to develop that 16 acres. There's also another 30 acres just south of this development site that's currently being done, not to mention the Jensen and Hanson farms that are on the other side of Elk Creek Road that are rumored to be interested once everything is paved and developing. Of course, I can't say whether they are or not, everything's always rumor when you're in our position. But I do think it is appropriate to find an alternate path into this area. I don't even know if on the other end, coming off of a DOT path with the interstate ramp is ever a legitimate option. Of course, there's trees there, you'd have to take out trees. I don't think it's worth it to do something like that if we can get ahold of the, the trust that owns that property on the north, or I don't know what, it's an angle, so north side of the southeast corner, that would be ideal to creating an access since you can't go over a septic tank.
Okay. Well, again, this project has not been let yet, so I'd like to ask the Engineers Department to give us information on, on this map we've received here. Again, if there's any changes to what we've already received in our agendas, we'll probably need to receive this into the record, but if you're just giving us an overview of what it looks like, you can just proceed however Mark Nara would have you proceed.
He received this yesterday, so it's brand new, and it was, he was just going out to ask differences in concrete quantities, just to give a comparison on, it needs to be paved anyway. So the additional cost to, to do the roundabout was maybe 50 to 75,000 additional to add that extra concrete for a roundabout versus just having the existing five-way intersection repaved.
Can we pause right there? For our collective, I don't know, the collective betterment of society, the incremental cost from going from a traditional intersection to a roundabout, you're saying the estimate is 50 to 75,000 dollars?
For this specific one, yes.
For this specific one, okay.
Because we are adding an extra thousand square yards of concrete for this
Okay.
project?
So that's the cost of the extra concrete, is 50 to 75,000 dollars?
Yes.
We're, we're just hearing, as, as we're used to, you know, there's a headline, and then people say, why are you spending $2 million on a roundabout when there's a pothole over here? Well, there's an intersection that needs to be replaced because it's 35 years old, and perhaps you could address that need or, or just emphasize that is one of the projects that has been in the plan and why it is in the plan.
Well, this is a 35-year-old pavement that we've been looking at. I'm, I'm be honest, I haven't been with this project for that too long, so, but...
Well, that's, I don't want to put you on the spot when Mark is, you know, let, you know, let us know that he's on his way back, and he'll get to this as soon as he possibly can.
I'm gonna throw out here, when this intersection was created, back when they put the bypass in, Christie Road was gravel, so there wasn't hardly any traffic going that way.
Can I maybe answer that, Mark? Mark said typically they don't like to abut new pavement to old, especially when the old needs to be replaced anyway, that it's much cleaner. And far be it from me, I don't know, you know, my background's not in any of this, but if you're going to replace, or you're gonna be doing the paving on Elk Creek Road, and then you're gonna be abutting at X2, 35-year-old concrete, and then at some point, you're gonna have to do that, that it's, it's much better to pour it all at one time, which would seem for efficiency's sake to make sense. To your point, Mr. Chairman, I like that we've highlighted that it's a 50 to 75,000 roundabout, as far as what the added cost is. And then I guess it just comes back to whether that's a better configuration or not, so.
Okay.
I guess the only other alternative would be stoplights, and you're talking a decent amount of money there, and you're still going to have these rather difficult traffic movements as you currently have.
I think broadly, the operational cost of a stoplight is something to consider that's not really in the initial build.
And that would be a city thing, because the ways the county don't deal with stoplights.
They're usually 350 to 500,000 just to put up stoplights. That was part of the cost of changing one-way to two-way downtown and why that was not done. I would say again to the new members of the board here, the reason this was getting paved in the first place, it was part of a development agreement with this development. The tax revenue from all the new development is obviously the funding mechanism for a lot of what's going on in local government, so the interchange does get supported and paid for through our growth and tax base, so that's part of why you do these development agreements when you, when you have a developer willing to, you know, invest that kind of money. The developer did pay a third of the share, I believe, on the, on the road adjacent, so that was a big chunk of the costs absorbed by them as well.
So, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate the, the fact that with expansion, there would need to be stoplights if there is further development.
Potentially quite a bit more traffic when that area develops, so you're kind of hitting it earlier than later, having to deal with an even bigger problem.
And I'm, and I'm personally totally fine discussing the merits of the design if we want to do that, but I just want to put this cost issue to bed because, again, the media reporting is, is a little sensational, it rounded up by a couple hundred thousand dollars. If you rounded the nearest million, it's $2 million, sure, for the entire thing and the paving and grading. But if we take the average of the 50 to 75,000 estimate of the county engineer to move to a roundabout, given the extra pavement, we take the average of Mr. Raddick's 350 to 500,000 dollar cost to put in the stoplights, we're looking at a roundabout costing 362,000 less than a traditional intersection. So, Mr. Taylor?
So a couple of things. It sounds like we do need to receive this into the record. This is just received yesterday, is that correct?
Yes.
So I would move to receive.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes 5-0.
And then just a couple of other things. I would like to see, you know, a continued discussion on this, just because I think it presupposes a lot. Talking to Mark, traffic lights would be way, way, way down the road if that reached a certain traffic count. I'm not, right now, just based on some of this development, I'm not seeing where we get 150 or even 200. I just like to have the information based on questions. Right now, just even driving that area, I see room for maybe 20 homes. I mean, I see, it's a big assumption that all these farms get developed otherwise, and there is a status quo right now where I had a couple of residents at the hearing say, have you ever been backed up more than three cars? No. You know, they put the do not block this intersection sign, so then why is there such a need for this traffic flow? And the answer is, well, just wait. When there's 250 cars going from Elk Creek, and I'm like, well, I just don't see where the data leads us to that conclusion. But I, so I do think it merits just some further discussion on whether or not this blue line is the design, it's just a question. And then finally, I would just ask, I know we have a couple of landowners in that area, if you wanted to make any comment, just know that they potentially could during this item, so.
I guess too, you know, if you're designing an intersection that's gonna last you 30 to 50 years, you know, part of that is maybe planning ahead for 30 to 50 years of development as well in the area, so I think you are smart to be ahead of it. And I'm just, you know, as far as the merits go, there, there's definitely areas in Sioux City where I fought against roundabouts because they required a lot of land acquisition. This does require some land acquisition, but it's very minor because it's already got a lot of the right-of-way in this case, and you don't have to tear anything down in the process. The one that was proposed in Sioux City before over on Jay Avenue required purchasing four different businesses and tearing them down. Well, our roads are to serve the tax base and the businesses, not tear them down and, you know, diminish the tax base. So this is one of those cases where, yeah, maybe it makes sense, so.
Yeah, I think you're right, Keith. You gotta look at, you know, look out 30, 40, 50 years, and I think a lot of the angst with the roundabouts really comes from truck drivers, large trucks, because it is hard for them to navigate. I, I made a joke that anytime I go to Worthington, when they've got three or four of them in a row, it seems like there's always a truck in the middle of one, anytime I've been up there, but this is not a high-truck area. You know, it's just, it's a nice residential area. I think it would help the flow there immensely. Is it something that's needed right now? Probably not, but in 20, 30, 40 years, I think absolutely. And the traffic lights, you've got continual maintenance there and all that, you know, so, but the biggest thing is we have to make access for those people, and that elderly woman called me too this weekend, and so that's the biggest thing, is we gotta make sure that those folks can get by with as little interruption as possible, and I think that hopefully we can come to a better resolution on that, so.
Kind of like Mr. Raddick was saying, if we need to put something like that in a, in a contract, if it's something better, best handled through the contractor, it helps some way in shape or form. Was there anything else you had for us, gentlemen?
Nope.
This is just one roundabout, this is a proposal for 500, is that correct? Okay. Community's word.
No, this is a rare event.
Okay, thank you.
May be quoted tonight, so just be careful. And I would just ask, is there anyone who would like, is it okay to ask if there's anybody who'd like to speak, and I'm kind of reiterating?
Yes, yes. Would anyone like to speak to this? Please introduce yourself with your name and address, and appreciate you coming in.
Hi, Jan King, 4,000 old Lakeport Road. Thank you for hearing this, and I like the feedback that we're beginning to hear. As an elderly person who lives on that block, we have a lot of concerns, we have several. We have had multiple ambulance runs in the last couple of years, and the only time we see any kind of a backup is when church is letting out. I mean, seriously, that's the only time, and thank goodness, they all go to church, they're gracious, we take our turns. But it's really not that bad. We don't, with the stop sign or the sign we've got now to not block our intersection, it's amazing how many people just stop, let us go. So you're really not sitting there for maybe one or two cars to go by. And Jeremy drives it from time to time, and you're never waiting that long. I just don't see that a few people getting backed up for three cars really warrants spending that much money when there's so much other that can be done with that money in the county and even in the city. So I just don't think, this is a good intersection. If you moved it up a block, past Casey's, to Lakeport there, I could see that one very easily being done, because that's always a headache getting out onto that. But we just, our big fear is being blocked in when we need to make a run in the night or even during the daytime to get somebody to a hospital or to a doctor, and our services, I mean, getting our garbage in and out. The contractor hasn't, there's no contractor yet, right? He hasn't agreed to take our garbage to the corner. So are we gonna have to do that? There's no way. So there's just so many unanswered questions, and it really makes us inconvenienced, and from what I know, in the last seven, eight, nine years, there's only been two small fender benders. So take that into consideration, too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just close this item out by saying one thing, the, the hardest thing to hear from the 30, 40 people who came that night was a couple who said, you know what, no matter what we do, you guys are gonna do whatever you want anyway, so nothing that we say or do is gonna matter. And that just, that isn't this board. And so I'm really glad that you all collectively, we're hearing people, we're gonna take some action, we're gonna get more public input, and we're gonna respond. That's our job, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I do think, you know, for our engineering staff here to hear that, yeah, this, this is a priority to find a is a priority to find an access route. And of course, garbage collection is now, you know, definitely a concern that I would have, you know, with, you know, kids. And we create a little bit of garbage. And I'd like to make sure it's gone when I live, you know. I had that issue when they did Broken Kettle Road. Actually, I had to remember the road I live on. You know, they didn't have adequate garbage, garbage access. We had to like wheel our cart, you know, all the way down to the corner. And that was not very easy because we don't have sidewalks where we live. And I know a lot of that area doesn't have sidewalks either. So, which has always been a concern in this area. So, yeah, thank you for bringing those concerns and throwing this on the agenda so we can discuss it openly.
And we, we have every reason to prioritize this time-wise because we don't want to start this too late in the year and run up against bad weather. So that's why it's been slated for the time it has is simply minimal disruption and quickest project turnaround. Also, these things go up every year in cost. So, just like everything. All right. Anything else on this item? All right. Thanks, everyone. Item twelve is reports on committee meetings. Just a quick update on website IT matters. I think the county is going to be exploring upgraded Intranet site or employee resources site for our, our website. Obviously, it's internal. But the same vendor that designed the website, Neapolitan Labs, completed that for the city of Sioux City. And from a cursory overview, Vice Chair Bittenger and I agree it's, it's a good, it's a good system. It's very professional and clean. Looks a lot like our current website. It's just specialized for employee resources and forms and completion of forms and, and, you know, submission of likely benefit information, things like that. So just smooth, smooth government in the background. We're going to try and get some details, get HR and IT together. Thanks for their efforts to do some background on how we're going to roll this out and involve all of our elected officials and department heads at a later date with some more details. So, any other reports on committee meetings?
Go ahead.
All right. So I had SEDC. Again, that's kind of one of our regional, under the umbrella of Simcoe, basically do SBA loans and administer those. We did have a business that is in our region that basically has maxed out now its loan potential with SEDC. And they are doing another expansion. Really unique. They basically make baked goods that, that are frozen, kind of like those butter braids and things you see for fundraisers. But they, they have a pretty large distribution network. And those are made from family recipes that have been in the family for four generations now. And that business is pretty much most of the entire town, if you ever go there. I can't think of the town offhand. I'll have to check my minutes. But I kind of want to go up there and see if they do samples, you know. But anyway, that's all I had for you.
I attended youth art exhibition a month. Mayor Bob Scott, City Councilman Dan Moore, Superintendent Rod Earlywine. I saw a second grader in here named Athena who goes to Dodlin. She did a good job. So, attended though on behalf of the board.
We had LEC meeting this afternoon. First question, I guess, did all you guys fill these out? Get them back? Yep. You and Keith have not? Okay. If you guys would. So we had this item on the agenda today. I guess, Dan, you were there. So you, but, so we went, we went through and, and we got to see the final copies of like how I scored and Dan Moore scored it, Kenny scored it, and Ron Wick. And so we went through that. And then we started into a discussion on, you know, what is that one-time fee numbers of twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand, fifteen thousand, where that one-time expenditure, the maintenance fund would kick in. I propose that we would like to have a open meeting with the board supervisors and the LEC authority to go over this together. And Kenny can kind of give some of his input as far as what he sees as maintenance operational. I actually thought, looking through, that Dan, Ron, and I were, and Kenny were kind of on the same page on a lot of this stuff. And actually, Kenny had quite a bit that he thought should be split more so between county and maintenance fund too. So what we, what we identified as a date that works is not this Thursday, the next Thursday at three-thirty.
It's March seventh.
March seventh. Thank you. I was just going to pull that out. So, Mr. Chairman, we'd maybe like to get something set up here at the courthouse and do something about that then. And Dan Moore and Ron could make, could make that work. So, yeah. So we ended up tabling that particular item because we would like to have a joint discussion with the board supervisors about that.
Does anyone have any conflicts they can think of right now?
From one thirty to two thirty.
Okay. We're talking about three-thirty, March seventh?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay. And then we'd like to have our next week early.
That would be an open session.
Yes.
Correct. Yep. Open session. Correct. Next week, we'll have an agenda item on the, on LEC update again, get back to doing those. An update on the FOIA request. So we got the invoice for that last week on that FOIA request with KTIV. The total was eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. There was just short of a hundred and thirty-two man-hours that went into that. Those hours do not count our attorney's review or nor were those any of those charges for the attorney in that. Also, owner's rep Shane Albrecht with Baker Group, because it was so massive, ended up having to train a bunch of staff at Baker to help go through this, to accomplish this mission. And he did not charge for that time of training either. So what we elected to do was we took four thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents out of the interest income that the LEC had received. And we put that as a, as a offering towards KTIV for the large amount on that FOIA request, which is roughly about thirty-seven percent of that total bill. Initially, our estimate, we thought there'd be roughly a thousand documents that they would get access to. That number is actually now over seventy-five hundred. So we did seven times, over seven times the work still within that forty-five day parameter that we initially set out to accomplish. So if, if or when they decide to go through and collect payment, we have an external hard drive ready to go to them. We did ask that if other members of the media contacted them about, you know, documents or the FOIA request in their entirety, that they would share that. So.
And that forty-four hundred, was that, was that like half of the amount beyond?
That was, yes, half of the overage. So there, the estimate was three thousand and fifteen dollars. So there was a difference of eight thousand nine hundred and twelve. And we elected a three-o vote to split that in half. So that difference is four thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Had a town hall in, of sorts, in Smithland at the country's source Saturday. Actually, there was a really good crowd. We talked about roads the entire time. But for Matthew and for Jeremy and Keith, I think all of you would be happy to hear that there was nothing but praise on the gravel roads. There was not a single complaint about the gravel roads. And that area is an area that's been seeing a lot of the new gravel for about the last two and a half years. And they could tell it was making a difference. But they were still mad about one forty-one. They want that paved. So we talked about that a little bit. They talked about the, actually, Doug Shoup was in there when I first got there. So that was kind of funny. But talked about the search for a new county engineer. They're watching that very intently. You know, it's very important, especially down in that neck of the woods. There's not many roads. And so the roads that they have, they need to be in good shape. But appreciate it.
How many were there with you?
I would say there was fifteen to twenty people. So it was just a nice, just a nice crowd. We were sitting around and talking about stuff. So, but yeah, roads and, and we talked about Little Sioux Park, the parks down there. They were concerned about the water level at Little Sioux Park. And they were curious about the camping expansion down there and that kind of stuff. But no, it was a good time.
Great.
Thank you.
Only updates I have are from SHIP. They're just updating the beyond the bell offices. And so that's going well. And then just doing some more deeper, deeper dive into financial reviews and just updating the more, the board members monthly on that. And so, so everything else is running, running well. Sulan District Health, just we had the review for Director Kevin Grime. Anyhow, just pacifying colors. He's doing a great job there. So we're just kind of reviewing his yearly review. So it went well. And overall, everyone just agreed he's building a cohesive and positive work environment there, which is good to hear. And the employees enjoy working with him and collaborating with him. And then lastly, I got to go last Wednesday with the Church Ambassador Network that's in Des Moines. And just, we meet with legislators and just kind of say, how you doing? What's going on? You know, what, what can we pray for you about? You know, what do you need from the local levels? And, and so being a pastor and a supervisor, I get a lot of kind of eyeballs like, what? You do what? And so, but it was good to meet some of our northern counties, super, not supervisors, excuse me, legislators. So, yeah. But a lot of them did say, they said, boy, you guys have some interesting things going on in Woodbury County. And we have a lot more followers, as Doyle says too, people are watching us. But, but speaking of Doyle, Doyle was there actually. So I got shocked. Yeah. So I saw his cowboy hat bounce into the crowd. I was like, Doyle, hey Doyle. So yeah, I got to visit with him for a few moments. But, no, we've got some good things going on in Des Moines. But that's all I have.
How did they take your prayer for more local control? Was that meant?
Well, some of them, yes, you could tell they got a little rigid against that. And I just said, well, let's talk some more, gentlemen, about that. But I said, please contact the rest of the supervisors in Woodbury County. We could all give them a nice commentary on that. But some of them didn't want to hear it, but some were, were open to that. So.
Just on the topic of, of meetings while we're here, next Tuesday, the fifth, we'll have a three-thirty PM courthouse foundation meeting in the first floor boardroom for the, I believe we're called trustees, is it? Trustees, yes. So the trustees, as we wear our trustees hat, will be considering our, as we're wearing our supervisor hat, our request for fund transfer for the courthouse maintenance fund. That is coming Tuesday.
Will that potentially be our last meeting? Are we dissolving? That may be an auditor's question.
Well, that may be a question for the trustees. But since we're all trustees, we can answer, I suppose.
I mean, just once we transfer, if, I don't.
Yeah. I, I know that on the agenda, we'll be talking about, you know, being in compliance with 501(c)(3). And I think in the future, we, I think we discussed in the past that at this board level, while we were supervisors, trapped in trustees bodies, that we would, you know, be able to receive nonprofit donations and transfer them in that way. So to preserve a benefit for people donating to a 501(c)(3), perhaps it is a mechanism we would like to keep. But that's something we can talk about while we're trustees next week.
Can't wait to be a trustee.
Not to deliberate.
You guys don't know how much you missed out on grant township.
Yeah, you guys, it was, those are barn burners. Yep. So we got that next week. And then the following week on the twelfth, Mr. Bittenger and Nelson, are you going to be in attendance as normal on the twelfth, March twelfth, Tuesday meeting? Twelfth.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We should be good to meet. I, I'd heard Mr. Taylor might be unable to call in.
Right, military unit.
Okay. And Mr. Raddick, you might as well be traveling. Okay. So we'll still be good for March twelfth.
Okay.
All right. Item thirteen, any citizen concerns for items not addressed on the agenda already? Hearing none. Item fourteen, board concerns.
Just update tomorrow, Supervisor Nelson and I, Nelson and I will be touring the LEC. So that's tomorrow at four. So looking forward to seeing the updates on that in the building. I won't be here for the joint closed session on Thursday. I'll be out of the state with the, with the basketball tournament. So, and then on Monday, I will not be able now. I have a meeting. And I won't be, I will be coming late to the union negotiations on Monday. So just FYI.
Okay.
Probably not till, I think we're meeting at what time? We're meeting at, let me see here. I think we're supposed to meet at nine AM. I probably won't get there till probably eleven. Hopefully it's done before that. But.
Okay.
Eleven, eleven-thirty, just FYI.
All right.
Thank you.
You can be there.
Yeah.
All right. Any other board concerns?